Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise? And turn off any smart speakers. Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. The members of the press and public, please not post messages in the chat. Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes? As those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding the procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, though Bailey Roberts has indicated in chat that she has no sound and is to leave and come back in. I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I will take a roll call for the minute. I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their names. Lord Provost.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Alexander.
I'm present.
Councillor Anderson.
Good evening, I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Hurdell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nachla.
Hi, I'm present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts. I can see that, thank you. Councillor Rome.
Apologies, good evening, I'm present.
Thank you. Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Tolland.
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McKeer.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
George is having problems logging in. But he is coming on, he's trying to get in.
Thank you, Bailey, right. Councillor Malone. I'll mark his absence. Councillor Scullin.
Evening, present.
Councillor Shears. I'll mark his absent. Bailey Wright.
Sorry, I'm present, but Councillor Shears is not back till next week.
And there should be apologies already in for Charlie. I'll record apologies, really, thank you. Bailey MacPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton.
I am here.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
And Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Elaine. Roger, please.
Thank you again, Lord Provost, just to confirm that Councillor McCarvin has also joined the meeting. Lord Provost, members of the council, there are three items of business this evening. The first item of business is the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any questions? Is that agreed? Thank you. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Item three, general business, A vacancies outside bodies. It is reported that Councillor Rome has intimated his resignation from Tactran, which requires to be filled by the administration group. The council's instructions are requested as to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson.
Thanks, Lord Provost, for nominating Councillor Tolland, please.
Okay, thank you for nominating Councillor Tolland. Are there any other nominations? Don't see anything anywhere. Yep, don't see anything. Any questions on this? Is this agreed? Congratulations, Councillor Tolland. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. The final item of business, fifth statutory review of polling places and polling districts, you have a report before you.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions on this? I see nothing. Is this agreed? Thank you, everyone. That's council business. Good evening.
Thank you, Lord Provost. The next committee is the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee.
Good evening. We've just got one main item on this agenda, but we'll look for declarations of interest first. Any declarations of interest? Can't see anyone. So if you take us to the main item of business, please.
Thank you, convener. Item two is Dundee Climate Fund delivering community choices through participatory budgeting. And you have the report before.
Thank you. And the point of this report is to essentially ensure that all the councillors are aware of our climate fund. And this is the first participatory budgeting fund in Scotland with a focus on tackling climate change. And we set up the fund with £750,000 to run over four years a couple of years ago. There are five themes in the fund: energy, transport, waste, resilience and building capacity. And a review panel was established with experts on it to enable people to have their bids assessed. And we just report in this report that round one was launched in August. Sorry, I've got a sort of. Was launched in August 2022 with £385,066 in it. We received 29 bids, which was quite good going for the first fund of its kind in Scotland. They were assessed by the review panel, 23 bids made it to the public vote and 12 of those projects were successful. And one of the projects withdrew, but the living who did receive funding are detailed in appendix one to the reports. We just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the first round of funding and how successful that had been. The second round funding was launched in April last year. And we had a rather innovative approach, had a speed dating ideas generation workshop and involved over 200 people in coming up with ideas for projects. We worked with community larders, cafes, faith groups and worked through all the community centres. Fifteen bids were assessed and 10 have now been put forward to the public vote. And so the real point of this report is to make sure that all the councillors know that that fund is open. And there is a document, I can show you. And basically the voting is open until the 15th of March. And I would really urge every councillor here to make sure that they vote. You can either vote online directly or go to the libraries and get assistance with voting. So I'm just wondering if anyone has any questions on the report or they're happy to note it and promise to vote.
Councillor Alexander.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, just a comment from me, and I use the chat function as has Bailey Dawson, just for information. First of all, just to commend the work that's been undertaken in this, because I think when you look at the extent of the organisations who have benefited from this funding, some of those funding events might be relatively small amounts of money, but the positive impact they can have on more than one issue. So of course, the driver for this was about supporting people, supporting our communities to deliver benefits that have a positive impact on the climate and the environment in Dundee and beyond. But of course, the benefit of deploying this model through a PB model is that it has other benefits as well. So if we look at some of those projects on the list, from Campy Growers to the Douglas Food Community Group, Dundee Heritage Trust, Fermi or Community Green, the Scottish Association for Mental Health, Duntrun Community Gardens, there are so many other objectives and benefits that have been delivered as a result of this funding that I really have to commend yourself and the deputy convener and the broader service for taking that approach. Because ultimately, we've benefited the climate, yes, in positive terms. But we've also enabled some of these organisations to do more proactive work, to engage with more of their community, to deliver foods, to support people most in need. And even things like the Dundee Burns electric fan, that is now enabling them not only to reduce their overheads, which means more money is being used to support people in need in this city, but it also means they can do more with less. And again, for all of those reasons and more, it has social, economic and environmental benefits. And I think again, it goes to show that Dundee does these things very well when it talks about connecting with communities, connecting with organisations and understanding what small pots of money can do. And of course, it would be remiss of me not to also mention the fact that Dundee was recognised as one of only 119 cities in the entire world for its bold leadership on environmental action and transparency, despite the global challenges that we've been facing of late. And I think that's a testament to initiatives and projects like this, but also the work that we do with communities, for communities. And hopefully that work will continue. So thanks very much for bringing it to committee and again showcasing not just what the council's done, but what each of these organisations are doing within their community as well.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Climate change can be very overwhelming. We know that we have breached the 1.5 degree increase in temperature over the last year. And the thing about this fund is it enables people to do very pragmatic, practical things in their communities to actually feel that they're doing something to make a difference. So that's the real success of it. Thanks very much for your comments. Bailey Dawson.
Thanks, convener. Sorry, it's just an apology. It completely slipped my mind when this came up that I probably should declare a non-financial interest in relation to the Dundee rep application. So just with apologies, yes, I forgot to do that.
I won't see whether I vote for you then. And any other comments? Are people happy to endorse the report? Thank you. I think that's our business for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Can we have the first item of business, please, Elaine?
Thank you, convener. Item one is declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Councillor Creighton, I can see you've got a declaration.
Thank you, convier. I just wish to declare a non-financial interest in relation to item five. Although my employer have no involvement in the detail of the report, I work in the EV industry. And so I just feel it's appropriate to make a declaration at this time.
Thank you, Councillor Creighton, that's appreciated. Any other declarations? I can't see any further. Just give it a second. No. Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please, Elaine.
Item two is contract for the treatment of mixed glass.
So this is an agenda note which updates the committee on progress made with a new tender for the treatment of mixed glass and following evaluation, which considers both price and quality aspects. It recommends the contract is awarded to Sibelco Green Solutions. And wonder, Mr Boyle, are you on the call tonight?
Hello, convener. Yes, I'm on the call.
Thank you. Do I have any questions at all for this item?
I've got that.
I don't see any questions in the chat. I'm looking for our hands. I'm not seeing any. Can this item be agreed then, please? Or noted, rather? Thank you. And next item, please, Elaine.
Thank you. Item three, Environmental Improvement Works 2023/24, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval for further environmental improvements involving general improvements within Cabburnham Park and installation new park signage in a number of boundary welcome points in the city. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, I'll just give it a minute. Can't see any questions and I can't see any hands. Can this be agreed then? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please.
Item four is variation of waiting restrictions 2024, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval, as Elaine says, to vary parking restrictions in six locations to improve road safety and enhance environmental amenity. Do you have any questions on this item? I can't see any. This could be a quick nine. That being said, can this be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please.
Item five, electric vehicle charging infrastructure operation and maintenance procurement sourcing strategy. You have the report before you.
So this item seeks approval to commence procurement exercise for the operation and maintenance of EV charging infrastructure. The procurement will include the provision of back office administration services, routine maintenance, lifecycle renewable assets and will accommodate option for improvement and expansion of the charging asset. The costs will be recovered from EV tariff charges and details of the tenders received will be reported to a future committee meeting for approval. Do you have any comments on this item or questions? Just give it another minute. No, well, just before we move on, I'd just like to highlight my gratitude to officers in the department because I think that we can't say enough how much of a leading light the city is in terms of EV infrastructure and our placement for the future. So I just want to place my thanks on record for the team for all the work they've done and hope this continues into the future. So thanks and I hope this can be agreed then. Thank you. Next item, please, Elaine.
Thank you. Item six, home-to-school transport procurement sourcing strategy. You have the report before you.
So this item seeks approval to procure and award contracts for the provision of home-to-school transport services. Do you have any questions on this item? I don't see any questions. Can this be then agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Elaine.
Thank you, convener. Item seven, sourcing strategies by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of seven sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercises for each work stream. The strategies contained in the report comprise inspection, testing and service contracts for air compressor equipment, local exhaust ventilation and fire systems, electrical equipment across the city, medical baths and lifting equipment, boilers, CHPs, burners and flues and the replacement of lifts of the Caird Hall complex. And finally, the supply, installation and maintenance of decorative lighting features for the festive period. And Councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convener. Can I please ask about the Christmas decorations contract on page 33 of the papers? Does this recommendation in any way alter the amount and placing of decorations on streets in 2024 onwards in comparison to previous years? And does this cover only hanging decorations in streets or will it also cover other aspects like Christmas trees?
Thank you, Councillor Coleman. I'll bring in Mr Hamilton if he's available.
Thank you, convener. And the intention is that we seek to work with an organisation to put Christmas decorations up throughout the city centre, as has been the case in the past. But members will know that the budget remains unchanged from previous years. So we will need to go out to the market to see what we can get in terms of coverage of streets in period from 2024 onwards. And at the moment, we are still finalising the creative part of the tender. And I have not yet made a decision about the Christmas tree element to that, but that will be subject to further discussion before we go out to tender.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lynn, please.
Yeah, just a quick comment. It's not in the Christmas lights, but it's about lighting in general in the city centre. Might I just say how wonderful the city centre, particularly around Slether Gardens, Exchange Street, that kind of area looks with the permanent year-round lighting, which has been installed, really, really contributes to the good look of the city centre and the waterfront. So well done on that.
Thank you, Councillor Lynn. I'm sure you speak for a lot of people. I must say that I've thought the same, being myself in city centre and especially the new Catherine Exchange Street is very nice and it very much complements the entire area. So thank you for your kind comments. Do you have any further questions on this item? Bailey MacPherson, please.
Thanks. Just a quick one following on from Mr Hamilton's helpful reply to Councillor Coleman. I assume, and I assume it will be a yes, that when decisions are taken on the aspects that are yet to be decisions about things like Christmas trees, can I ask that all members are updated regarding that before we get to the Christmas period itself?
I think that's a fair ask and I think it's fair to say there's a bit of work to do as Mr Hamilton has alluded to, but Mr Hamilton?
Convener, yes, it is a yes.
That's much appreciated, Mr Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you. I keep muting myself. I don't know why. I'm going to have to stop doing that. But moving on, that being said, I can't see other questions. So can this be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please, Elaine.
This is item eight, tenders received by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
So the item is seeking approval for a accepted total of 10 tenders, the combined expenditure in the region of 5.9 million for construction and infrastructure works across the city. These tenders include upgrades of kitchen ventilation at Turn of House, environmental improvements to Locky High Street, installation of plate equipment at various sites across the city, including the replacement of Castle Green, junctional improvements and puffing crossing installations as part of the links to the Brophy Ferry to Monefyth active travel route, enabling works at Bell Street Car Park, commencing the transition to a green transport hub and repairs and improvements to Brophy Ferry harbour walls and slipway. And I can see I have a number of questions on this item, so I'll start, I believe it's Councillor Duncan first. Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that, convener. Just obviously, I certainly welcome the forthcoming investment to the play park improvements such as Castle Green, Bridge Street and Orker Park. And I've been asked by a number of the residents to kind of qualify the Castle Green proposals specifically in relation to the very popular splash pool feature. I think it's fair to say it's probably the most popular feature at that attraction. I think people might recall that previously there was something like a £700,000 capital plan and, you know, on offer in the previous draft. Whereas obviously this expenditure is a somewhat less impressive, £220,000. So I'm really just wondering, will this decreased budget actually stretch to covering the renewal and or repair upkeep of the splash pool?
I'll bring in Mr Boyle to answer this. Mr Boyle?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Councillor Duncan, for the question. No, this proposal just involves the play equipment installation. It does not cover budget to cover splash pool. Thanks, convener.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. Does that answer your question, Bailey? Sorry, Councillor Duncan.
It does, although I mean, I would simply make a plea that if at all possible, that, you know, whatever can be done to address the future of the splash pool should be done. And myself and I'm sure award colleagues would be interested in anything that can be done on that front.
Thanks for your comments, Councillor Duncan. Bailey Scott next, please.
My question is about Castle Green as well, convener, and it's about the timescales for doing the work. Because the report says that the construction works will be undertaken in the summer. And I just wondered if there was any way of bringing the works forward so they'll be completed in time for the school's summer holidays? Or if it has to happen during the summer period, whether it can be done in such a way that parts of the park will still be available for the children to use over the summer?
Mr Boyle?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey Scott, for the question. Yeah, we'll do everything we can to ensure that parts of Castle Green are left open. There'll be obviously issues with the 12-week build programme for the actual main play unit itself, but we'll do everything we can to minimise that time where possible. Thanks, convener.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. Does that answer your question, Bailey Scott?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. That all being said, can this item be agreed? Thank you. I believe that's the last item of the Fair Work Enterprise and Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Elaine, if you could just confirm?
Thank you, convener. That concludes Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Elaine. And thanks, everyone.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
My apologies. Came up saying I didn't have a signal, so I was getting my second piece of kit just to make sure that it works. I went blank for 30 seconds.
I went blank for thirty seconds. So did you introduce, Mr. Wardle?
Yeah, thanks very much, Convena. So you've got the city governance agenda before you. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
See, nobody rushing for the keyboard, so we'll take that as a no.
Yeah, thank you very much. There have been no declarations. Takes you on to item two, council housing crisis. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey Keenan.
Straight over to Bailey Keenan. Kevin?
Okay, Convena, thank you. Convena, like, councilors will likely be aware that a number of local authorities have declared the housing emergency. And I actually feel that Dundee, based on the mailbag that I receive and that of my colleagues, that Dundee should be almost in that position themselves. But I'm given this and hope that there is cross party agreement on it, that it allows officers to come back and report exactly where we are in relation to housing. I mean, at the moment, we see that there's almost 8,000 on the waiting list. There is in excess of 400 voids. And there's a number of times where we failed in our statutory duty and left people in bed and breakfast longer than they need be. Getting repairs seems to be a real problem and I seem to be continually chasing repairs. And no doubt others are as well. We also know that there is a rack problem that's around the corner that will, no doubt, potentially cost a lot of money to repair. And I think that that's the type of thing that I would hope would, would be included in officers' reports as they come forth, come back. We need to take into account, of course, that the affordable housing grant is to be cut by the Scottish Government by 26%. And the effect that that's likely to have on any new built property or any chance that we get ourselves away from a housing crisis. So at that, I'm happy to leave it at that. I know that others will maybe want to say someone as well, but I'm hoping that that's acceptable to council and that we could move forward and see that report coming from officers. I would indeed like to have used some of the uncommitted reserves to invest in housing, but see that as a real problem at the moment, when so many of the things like the rack issue is unknown and the cost of that. So I appreciate that officers have a job to do. And, you know, I would like to see a report coming back here that shows warts and all of where we are in relation to housing.
Thanks very much, Kevin. Thanks for your bravery as well. Can I just say, you know, certainly from my perspective, you won't require a second, I'm happy to support the thrust of what you're looking for there. And I think the reality is on broadly speaking on many of these issues, we are always, almost always certainly unanimous in taking that approach forward in terms of making sure that we maximise the resources that we have available to improve and expand the housing options available to people. And we're always pretty proactive in terms of representations to governments, plural, when it comes to resources and any other measures. And there's a few things that probably happened in the intervening period which may be helpful for, for colleagues to be aware of. But of course, again, they'll come back more fully in a report from officers. But if I can just maybe itemise a couple of those because it is relevant to the conversation. And so on the land and business, sorry, buildings transaction tax, for example, there has been a special instrument laid in Parliament which would exempt councils if approved from the first of April 2024. So again, hopefully that will be an issue that will be no more going forward and we will be exempt from that. And I think, again, it's helpful to be aware of that. And in respect of housing voids, I think members will remember that, I think it was the twenty second of January where we agreed to bring forward more information in terms of the improvement plan for voids and repairs as well. So that is something, as you rightly comment on, that is being taken forward. And I know my colleague, Mark Flynn in particular, has been taking a proactive approach in terms of engagement with housing associations as well as internally within the department and also made representations to Scottish government as well on a few of the issues that you've raised today. So on that basis, I think we are agreed that we want to do more. We are aiming to do more and improve the situation and that is where our focus has to be. And on that basis, I'm happy to agree to your amendment. But I can see that Bailey McPherson wants to come in as well, so I'll come to you, Fraser.
Thanks, Convena. And just really to concurb with really everything that Kevin had to say there. And I think the tenor of his request in terms of the four bullet points in a way hit the nail on the head in relation to the sort of feedback that would be very much appreciated from officers. We actually looked as a group at the motions that have appeared on other councils in relation to housing emergency. But I think in the first instance, what councillor, sorry, Bailey Keenan is suggesting in terms of a feedback from officers would be very helpful. I think we all, and Kevin's absolutely correct in terms of the volume of repairs requests, I think we're all seeing that right across the city. And, you know, I pay tribute to particular officers who are very good at responding to a deluge, no doubt, of repairs requests is appreciated. But I think we all know the challenge facing that particular area. And clearly, the slashing of the Affordable Housing Grant is frankly to be deeply regretted. I noticed social media from Shelter on that very issue today, actually, as it happens. But as I say, very supportive of what Billy Keenan is putting forward. And I'm hoping and I suspect we're going to get all party agreement on that. So thanks, Convena.
Thanks very much again for your bravery, Fraser. And I think there are no other comments. So on that basis, as you say, I think we'll move forward on the basis of consensus. So can I take this item as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three then, before his acts of kindness, and this item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor McHugh.
Councillor McHugh, Dorothy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. On Christmas Eve morning, I watched a short video of Fairfield Community Hub's Christmas preparations. There was a room full of Christmas hampers, a room full of carrier bags containing all the ingredients needed for a family Christmas dinner, and a room piled high with wrapped Christmas presents for local children. At Christmas 2023, Fairfield spread kindness to 200 families, managing to give every child a minimum of six gifts to open on Christmas morning. It made me weep. And not just because of this wonderful display of kindness from a
You cannot silence me? I was going to say the same thing, Dorothy, sorry.
Sorry. And not just because of this wonderful display of kindness from a community stepping up to help its own, but from the stark reminder to us all that this work is so desperately needed. And not just in the North East, but right across our city. It's heartwarming to remind ourselves, of course, that this is Dundee, a city with a proud record of helping its own and a huge army of volunteers. You'll remember how our people stepped up during the Covid pandemic. And just as they did then, all across our city, people are responding, stepping up to help those who need it in the most practical of ways. And this is happening, of course, not just at Christmas, but every day of the year. Good people, like fans supporting food banks, whose volunteers stand outside football stadia every week in all kinds of weather, collecting food, toiletries and money donations to distribute across food banks. Good people like Graham's Kitchen, whose volunteer teams have been providing a hot meal, snacks and hot drinks to homeless people every Saturday night from behind the Overgate Car Park for the last 12 years. They also distribute sleeping bags, blankets, warm clothing and hygiene products to people who are absolutely at rock bottom. Good people like Lochie Community Larder, who offer not just a food larder, but a cafe and a cosy corner, serving most days around 120 free hot meals. And like Fairfield, Lochie operate a system where customers can make their own choice from a wide selection of foods. All of this good work is truly amazing in its geographical spread across our city, in its sheer volume and depth, and in its capacity to support people in difficult circumstances, to provide some level of peace of mind, to relieve some of the emotional stress that comes with poverty, and to restore a degree of dignity and empowerment to communities, offering help without judgement. The numbers are sobering. Fairfield estimate that over 1,600 people benefit from their services. Lochie Larder is supporting around 4,000 people every week. There are community ladders, food banks, community cafes in every area of Dundee, meaning thousands of people are being helped every day by hundreds of volunteers reaching out a hand and a listening ear. And of course, these good people do so much more than offer practical help. All of our network of food banks and ladders, community cafes and homeless outreach projects work with voluntary and statutory agencies to provide welfare, benefits, housing and other advice and support. They work with supermarkets and bakeries to harvest and recycle good quality food that might otherwise be destroyed. And they're supported in this good work by agencies such as Fairshare, Dundee Burns, Faith and Community, and of course, this council. These are not random acts of kindness. This is collaborative and cooperative partnership working of the very best kind. This is our communities recognising the needs of our people and working together to tackle inequalities fuelled by the cost of living crisis. This is kindness and we have it in abundance in Dundee. These projects illustrate the goodness at the heart of our communities. They deserve to be acknowledged. They deserve to be celebrated. They deserve to be supported. Nothing is more important than a decent home and food on the table. Nothing. Food and shelter. Without these, our people have nothing and worse, they have no hope and no aspiration for themselves or their children. The good people of Dundee recognise this and have stepped up to do something about it. I'm asking all of you, this collective body, to continue to do the same.
Thanks very much, Dorothy. And again, certainly endorse everything you've said there in terms of the commitment of so many people. And I think we'll all have our own personal experiences and interactions with different groups and individuals. And it's absolutely tremendous to know that we've got so many passionate people in every single one of our communities that are doing amazing work. And I'm reminded by, I suppose, a couple of things that have happened over a wee while. And most recently, I suppose, I was just looking yesterday at some of the coverage for Sam Bruce at the Lochie Larder, one of the ones you mentioned, and receiving through Lord Provost, that sits in the year. And her long overdue reception as well. And I think there's so much work to commend. And of course, we'll all have different, as I say, insights and interactions. And I'm constantly humbled by the interactions from some of the organisations that I've connected with over the last few years, particularly organisations like Togs and Dundee Burns, the Food Network more broadly. And of course, again, the Lord Provost hosted a reception last year to thank all of those that were involved in some of that work and volunteering their time. And I think that is your right to raise it, your right to highlight that. And it's something that we need to continuously do because the thanks doesn't stop once we've delivered it. It's a daily occurrence. And of course, the commitment by so many is absolutely incredible. The stark realities that we face are also something we need to recognise. And working alongside councillor Crouchshank and councillor Tollin through the Fairness Leadership Panel as well, we talk about the impact upon volunteers and voluntary organisations frequently, in particular burnout and the pressure that we're seeing across the board. And I think it's worth not just recognising the incredible efforts, but the strain it puts on many of those individuals who volunteer in their own time, out with work, with their own family commitments as well. And again, I would certainly want to align myself with everything that you've said because any thanks that we can give through this process and through our various meetings is never going to be enough. But I think it's, it's right that we continue to, to put the spotlight on that. And with that, I will come to councillor Short. Can I just check? Sorry, Dorothy, I should have asked before now. I got caught up. But is there a motion to be circulated via committee services? And if so, can I ask them to do that just to make sure?
No, there's no motion, John. I don't know. I'm just speaking to everyone.
Grand. No, thank you, Dorothy. Okay. And Lynn, councillor Short?
Thanks. Dorothy, none of those will have been a surprise for you. Seeing as during Covid, you and I were the top judges for the telly when they had their Community Champions Award. And that obviously came from Covid and the heart and soul and just sheer amazing opportunities that were seen, taken up and delivered by people in our communities. And to be honest, maybe a little bit like the communities herself, I'm a little bit worn down because what we do is every single day as we do this, we see communities who are struggling and they're struggling because the cost of living crisis. And the cost of living crisis is not something that was made other than by people who make economic decisions and continue to make them. And they're making them and they're making the people in this city suffer. And so, yes, I totally agree that we should have random acts of kindness. But maybe those who sit in number 10 should start and be the kindest of all.
Thanks very much, Lynn. Certainly agree with that when we see the issues and we know the issues that we're seeing. And I think we can all recognise that there's much more work that needs to happen across the board. And what we do locally is important, but of course, it's impacted by national events and international events as well. I'll come to councillor El Naklin next. Nadia?
Thank you. Thanks, Dorothy, for raising such an important issue, not just of kindness, but of, of real unity across sectors that support each other through really difficult times. I might be going on a bit of a tangent here, but I can only talk about my reflection on your, on your beautiful words, Dorothy, about how safety and security and food and a home are so important. And just at that point, I can't help but mention the fact that we have so many global conflicts. It's coming up for two years of the Ukrainian war and we're seeing also a genocide in Gaza. So just that reflection of Dundee being such a city of kindness, I've always felt, you know, as a Scottish Palestinian raised in Dundee, that we always stand up for justice and we always put out our hand of kindness to anyone that needs it. So as Lynn mentioned about number 10, I really hope that all our parties get behind a ceasefire boat. And I just think it was, I just, I felt like I couldn't let this moment pass. I just really wanted to mention it. So thank you, Dorothy. It's been a really good opportunity just to reflect on why we all do the work that we do.
Thanks, Nadia. And I think everybody would absolutely agree with those sentiments because we know that that kindness extends far beyond just those that are within the city. And we need to make sure that we're always outward looking as well as looking after the Donoreans that are here in the city as well. So thanks very much for those comments. And I will come to councillor Lynn next. Ken?
Yeah, I really liked your, your comments about all the organisations you mentioned that do such good work in the city, Dorothy. You're a very kind person and I really appreciate you and I appreciate the contribution you make to the IJB. And probably the only thing we would disagree on is the constitution. Many other things we'd be in total agreement on. I think it's really nice of you to acknowledge the work that these organisations do. I know that you don't have a motion, but I think it'd be nice if someone important, like maybe the leader of the council or the chief officer, Greg Colgan, could maybe just write out to these organisations and say that the contribution they make and the acts of kindness that they perform to people in the city have been acknowledged in the chamber by yourself and commented on by a number of councillors. So no motion, but I think it'd be nice if we could do that. And just briefly, I'd also like to remind members that you may not think it's necessary to formalise kindness, but the IJB or is it the ADP or is it both, I'm not entirely sure to be honest, have plans to inaugurate a year of kindness in the, in the very near future, which is in particular reference to the issues that we have with, with drug use in the city and the devastation it causes. But I'd like to think we could broaden that out a wee bit to promote kindness. But I'd like to think we could broaden that a wee bit to promote kindness in general. So I think the last update we had at the I J B was probably two or three months ago. Have a meeting on Wednesday, Dorothy and Siobhan, as you'll know, and I'll certainly ask for an update on that. So that's something that we've got coming up, which will further promote the kindness that already exists in the city. So well said, Dorothy. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Ken. I'm certainly happy to pick that up. And members might recall that previously, Lord Provost and I did indeed reach out to a lot of people and we also provided certificates of appreciation, I think is how they were termed at the time to recognise that incredible support. So again, happy to look at that and take that off table and perhaps keep all elected members abreast of that. Because I think we're all unanimous in this, we all recognise that the challenges out there right now are getting even more difficult. And we're asking more of people who are giving up their time and their efforts and organisations are doing all that they possibly can. And we as twenty nine elected members, of course, have to help in any way that we can. But beyond that, it's also worth celebrating every single one of those in our communities as well. I don't think there are any other contributions at this point. So I just want to say thank you to Dorothy for highlighting the issue and thanks for all the contributions because I think it's really useful to just highlight all that positive work that's going on and recognise the efforts of so many, as I've said. Thanks very much. Okay, Willie, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Okay, thank you. Item four, then, Joint Inspection of Adults Support and Protection at Dundee Partnership Findings and Improvement Plans, your asking recommendations.
So I'm. Yeah, I'm very pleased to receive this report, which highlights a lot of the positive work that's been undertaken to protect and support adults at risk of harm across the city. And of course, it's part of a much wider piece of work, looking at the Protecting People Partnership. And, you know, we've got to be grateful for all of those that play a part in supporting this work and of course, other scrutiny partners as well, from the Care Inspectorate, Health Improvement Scotland and a whole host of others who have a vital role in that broader spectrum of work and making sure that it is done in the way that we all hope it is as well. I think it's also worth mentioning that as well as providing the chance to recognise the successes, the inspection process is also an opportunity to consolidate ongoing improvement activity. And of course, we learn just as much from areas where we haven't perhaps succeeded or delivered what we wanted as much as we do from the areas that are successful. So it's a really useful process to continue to challenge ourselves, to continue to look internally at how we're providing those services and improve them to deliver better outcomes for the people that the service is there to do. With all of that said, I think it's probably appropriate for me to pass over to Elaine Torrance, if that's all right, Elaine, to say a few words by way of further introduction. And then I'll come to Bailey Keenan for his question. Thanks, Elaine.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, that last item was really, really moving, wasn't it? Because actually, there's so much work that goes on to support adults at risk by the community that prevents getting into so many difficulties. So I really appreciated that item as well. So thank you for that. Yeah, this is our inspection improvement plan, which you're able to see. We have discussed, I think, before the findings of the inspection, which kind of clearly said that the adults at risk processes and leadership were effective, as Councillor Alexander said, but with areas for improvement. And we need to build on the areas for improvement. So the improvement plan really covers the areas that the Care Inspectorate highlighted and with as many clear actions as we've been able to do and also with identified leads so people know who's responsible for these actions and time skills. And we will be reporting back on the time skills and our progress on this plan in due course. I think in October, we've taken it back to the I J B and to the Chief Officers Group and clearly you will be part of that reporting process as well. So we've done a lot of work already and all the agencies are very much signed up to this improvement plan. So it's a multi-agency improvement plan. There's some key priority areas in it, particularly our redesign of the new Adults at Risk Committee, which is highlighted in the report, and also the redesign of our multi-agency pathway for adults at risk, which is again, multi-agency with all agencies involved in that. We've tried to keep the improvement plan as strategic as we possibly can. There's obviously a lot of action sitting below that and there's more detail in the development plan, which we have for the Adults Support and Protection Committee, which incorporates some other priority areas, particularly some of the findings from our recent significant case reviews and case reviews and learning from that. So I think, you know, happy to take any questions on the plan. Hopefully, people are finding it helpful. But just to reassure people, as the independent convener of the committee, I will be making sure that we have detailed reporting on this and that we're working together to make the improvements. And again, we do report up to the Chief Officers Group, who are also very, very helpful in identifying and assisting with resources and improvement actions. So I'm quite positive that we'll be able to move swiftly on this agenda and make some positive progress. So I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Elaine. And just to reiterate that point, I think it's abundantly clear that there's no complacency here and that everybody is working towards that end. And as you say, the Adult Protection Committee is there to ensure that this is taken forward and robustly dealt with as well. So we appreciate that and we appreciate your role as independent convener as well and all that you do. So I'll come to the questions and then perhaps come back to yourself, Elaine, and other officers as appropriate. So Kevin.
First of all, Elaine, I'm pleased to hear that you'll push for that level of resource that you need to make that difference. It doesn't make very good reading that we've no managed to take care of everything that was picked up in the two thousand seventeen, suggesting that not all the things that were should have been put into place have been embedded. And then I suppose the other comments or questions that I'd like to ask the, you know, in relation to twenty six percent of chronologies were rated good or better, seventy, seventy three percent them adequate or worse. And then, you know, further down with risk assessment of adult protection plan, twenty seven percent of risk assessment were rated good or better. It's quite low numbers, you know, and I suppose if we've got a written report on something that somebody reflects back on it and can't understand what it was about, then we've got a serious problem. So how do we address the lack of that?
Elaine, I'll come to you and then bring Diane perhaps after that.
Yeah, I think we're starting from a very low base, Councillor Keenan. And a lot of the background work around setting the chronologies, the whole process of what a chronology looks like, has all gone into the I T system that staff then have to report on. So we've done a lot better than we did at the previous one. If you remember the previous inspection, we really hadn't got any chronologies that were fit for purpose. So we are on a journey. I would like to set some targets around improvements and you'll see in the, you'll see in the improvement plan and that there are, there's quite a lot about quality assurance and case file auditing. And I would hope that each time we do a case file audit, we're able to see some improvements in that area. There's a lot of staff training also going on around what constitutes a chronology and what constitutes a risk assessment so that staff are very clear. Would also just add, this is a national issue, it's not just a Dundee issue. It seems to be one that we're grappling with right across Scotland. So there's national work also going on that. But I'm hoping, well, I'm not hoping, I'm going to be looking out to see that actually the number of chronologies and risk assessments do improve each time we do a case file audit. So that would be my expectation. But Diane may wish to comment in terms of the operational element of that. Diane.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. The inspection went back two years, so some of that work relates to areas after we put in some of the changes that we made. So looking at it over quite a broad period of time. Elaine's absolutely correct, a lot of the work was focused on trying to get these tools embedded. In relation to our mosaic training, our mosaic system, they had actually promised as well a new tool that would be arranged through the service and actually put through. And so we have done quite a bit of work to get staff to start to use what is an add-on kind of tool, but we're waiting on our client case system actually being put right through. Elaine's absolutely correct, this is a national issue in terms of chronologies, what it means, what it looks like, the way the system pulls the information through. So if you tick a box, it pulls the information automatically through. So you end up with quite a mix of different ways of actually reading through a chronology as opposed to it being something which is really set for the staff to be able to work with. So we continue to work with the staff around that. We're seeing improvements in terms of the way that it works, but we need to get that tool and the training absolutely correct so staff are very clear in relation to the work that they're doing. So it's one of our priorities going forward. Bailey Keenan.
Yeah. Can I just say that there seems to be a number of items or issues within here that are coming up fairly low results. And it looks very much like the work that we put in child protection many years ago. And wonder how we didn't manage to sort of learn from the mistakes of one area and feed them across the others. And wonder if that's still the case with other areas of protection in the city, you know, given that we spent a great deal of time on child protection and making sure that we embedded sort of good practice and quality assurance in there. So, you know, now we seem to be revisiting a few year on, which to me is sort of disappointing.
Thanks, Kevin. Diane, do you want to come back in?
Yes, Bailey Keenan. Originally, when we did this work, we started in Children's Services and came up with the approach that we needed to take and started to roll that out. So adult services were behind and absolutely confirmed that, that we were behind in terms of the lessons that we did and the work that we did in Children's Services first. So we're on a bit of a catch up in regards to that. What I would say is that in relation to the report, there were, and the Care Inspectorate fed back to us, that when it came to actually looking at the work that the staff have done, the practice, the support, the care, the safety of the people in Dundee, that they had absolutely no concerns. So this is absolutely about us getting our procedures right, about getting our tools right and making sure that our staff have a good understanding of what they need to do. And we're rolling that out as we speak. We had improved because we've done quite a bit of work already. What we need to do is get that consistent and absolutely about being embedded in the service so it's second nature to staff, rather than at this point, it still felt like a bit of an add-on the way they were reporting it. So that's the shift in that culture is what we need to do.
Thanks, Diane. Thanks for the questions, Kevin. I'll come to Councillor Creighton next, Michael.
Thank you, convener. It's just a quick comment and a question. On behalf of our group, I'd like to welcome this report, it's very positive findings. I would also like to thank all the staff involved, Elaine and her team and everyone else, in delivering positive improvements in this area. I have a question in relation to the current areas of improvement, specifically the need for change improvement needing further accelerate, further to the positive statement in Appendix Two of the report. And can I ask what the confidence is that we will get this acceleration in the short term due to financial challenges that we all know and are going on at this current time?
Thanks, Michael. I'll go to Elaine first. Elaine?
Yeah, I think as Diana's already indicated, this is about a culture shift rather than necessarily additional resources, although additional resources to help to take things forwards are always welcome. And you'll notice that there's some post in the Health and Social Care Partnership that's been recruited to and also the Lead Officer Post is also being recruited to. So that will actually help with all of that. But for me, it's actually about the way we do our business rather than necessarily more resources. Our Learning and Development Service is really good and there's a lot of training and staff training that was commented very positively in the report. And I think that bodes really well. Sometimes it's actually the releasing staff when you're really busy, that can be a challenge. But there is an awful lot of learning and development activity, which I'm quite proud of in Dundee. I think it's a really a leader in terms of what we do. So I think, yeah, I'm quite confident, it's not all about resources, it's actually about us leading the change, making sure that people know what's required and supporting them to take things forward, although resources are always helpful when we get them. So thank you, that's what I would say.
Thanks, Elaine. I think we'd echo that in every conversation at this point in time, more resources across the board would be welcome. But Michael, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Elaine. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And again, just to echo those comments, I think, again, thanks on record to the whole team for the work that they do because we know how important it is. I think, Elaine, you're getting off lightly because there's no more questions at this point. So thank you and thank you, Diane, for answering those questions. And as I say, thank you to the entire team as well, much appreciated. Can I take this report as agreed? Silence is agreement. Thank you very much. Okay, Willie? Yep, certainly standard report with some updates on movement within the capital plan. So I'll just go straight to questions. Beal McPherson.
Thanks, convener. My questions about the information in five point one and five point two point one in relation to the Harris Academy Extension, where it indicates that a reduction of point three hundred and fifty thousand in relation to the planned expenditure is reported. Now, it was, I'm very conscious of the fact that that three hundred and fifty thousand isn't our three hundred and fifty thousand because the project has been funded by our colleagues in Perth and in Ross Council. And my understanding, and I'm just, it might be my over sixty memories, so officers will correct me if I recall incorrectly, but I had understood that there were some minor, you might say, snagging or some work still required to be done, which was being left till the summer holidays. Is that actually correct? And is the, or is as far as officer concerned, no further work required on the extension, which I have to say, I have now seen run and is a considerable improvement in terms of the amount of facilities that are available for the Harris School community?
Thanks very much for the question, Fraser. I'll go to officers in just a moment. My understanding was there was some electrical work during the summer months in particular and you'll remember that that had an impact, just in terms of some of the community use for the facilities during a fairly limited period of time. But perhaps if I could just bring in Audrey May in the first instance to give an overview on any other officers as required. Audrey.
Thanks, convener. And thanks for the question, Beal McPherson. Yeah, it's my understanding that there's some works to be completed that would be done during the summer holidays, but I see that Neil Martin's come on the call, so he's probably better to give a more technical response than that. Thank you.
Thanks, Audrey. Neil.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Beal McPherson. And just to confirm, your memory is correct, there are works to be carried out in the word delay due to the substation installation. So in terms of the sequence, they'll be carried out next summer holidays.
Okay, that's very helpful. I presume the three hundred and fifty thousand is net of that. I presume that's included in the substantive amount that the build actually cost.
Correct, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, that's much appreciated, Neil. Thanks indeed.
Thanks for the question, Fraser. And I think there are no other questions on this item, so can I take the report as agreed? Thanking you very much. Move on to the next item, Willie. Again, standard update report on any variances in terms of the revenue budget. So any questions on this? Nope. Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Next item, please. Okay, again, hopefully this is relatively self-explanatory. There has been elected member briefings organised to go into a bit more detail and to allow members to ask some further questions of officers in regard to the capital plan and some of the variances. Of course, I think it's worth recognising that we all know, and we've had previous reports to this committee on some of the significant challenges in regard to the capital plan, not just cost escalation, inflationary pressures and supply issues and procurement challenges. So we know that has a significant impact across the board on different projects and we've had to make some difficult decisions as a result. And of course, this capital plan is no different, where we've tried to ensure that the envelope continues to be affordable whilst also recognising that more resources are required in particular areas, for example, Western Gateway Primary School. And again, I know that elected members will be pleased to see that there has been further resources allocated as part of this capital plan, taking that amount up to twenty five million. And notwithstanding those points, the challenges remain and of course, we'll be asking and monitoring the capital plan moving forward to make sure it continues to be affordable and deliverable across the board. And I'm sure all elected members will welcome further reports coming forward that details how that money is going to be allocated and when. how that money is going to be uh allocated and when projects will come forward. But I'll just go to questions. So I think Bailey Keenan, you've got a question.
Yeah, it's it's really in relation to the tackling climate change, uh monies that are mentioned within the report. And a great deal of it is uh less external funding, which would suggest to me that it's ring-fenced money coming from government and can only be spent on that particular area. And I'm wondering if the very house agreement is uh off the ground, if it's broken. And as to whether that would make a difference on how we spend things going forward, given that, you know, in a in a climate change scenario, perhaps the walking cycling safer streets that would be painting lines down the middle of pavement or whatever might not be the type of choice we'd want to make, given the number of houses that were flooded just recently within the city. And it may be something that we want to direct funds differently to than than see it all ring-fenced to particular areas that might not be making the best uh decision for for those homes and families that were affected with flood flooding. And their their self-care, you could make a comment out of very housing agreement and officers tell me where it is in relation to that funding.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. I'll I'll come back on on both points. First of all, I think it's really important to perhaps make a distinction between uh some of the terminology and ring-fencing. Some projects, of course, and and cycling infrastructure is a good example of that, are through a bid process. So not ring-fenced money as part of the general settlement, but actually direct funding that we have sought and bid for for a specific purpose. So I think we've got to be clear on the distinction between the two. Uh, that's not to say there won't be some funding that fits into the the description that you've made, but of course, there are plenty of examples. And I go back to some of the cycling infrastructure that has recently been installed, Moneyfees, Broughty Ferryway, for example, which was part of an ongoing uh piece of national work and we bid into that. So that successful bid has generated monies uh to take forward that work. But of course, there's other benefits, not just the improvements in terms of cycling infrastructure, which benefits everyone uh in terms of looking at air quality and some of those other issues. And but also the infrastructure and the construction uh benefits the economy as well. So I think we we can't just take a linear view at these things. We need to see them in in the broader spectrum of issues. On very house agreement, I don't think it would be appropriate to to ask officers uh for a comment on that, but clearly through COSLA. And there's been a lot of dialogue and debate around that. Uh, I'm very much committed to seeing the very house uh agreement uh continue and to hopefully um uh improve going forward, uh notwithstanding the the current challenges, which all elected members will be very much aware of. But part of the very house agreement has been really honest uh with national government and of course, um from their perspective, perhaps uh being very honest with local government. And we've got to continue to challenge. We've got to continue to sometimes agree to disagree on particular issues. And I will be as robust as I always am in those conversations, either individually with ministers uh or via COSLA, of course, because ultimately uh local government works well when it works in tandem with national government and other agencies and organisations. And that is absolutely where my focus is. Uh, I'll perhaps go to Robert in the first instance, just to comment uh on the question around that ring-fenced uh aspect.
So thank you, convenor, um and thank you, Billy Keenan. So clearly, obviously, the council's taken advantage of opportunities to secure funding for specific projects. Often it is, um councillor Keenan is just saying, ring-fenced for the specific project that we're taking forward. And clearly, as a council, we want to make the best of the opportunities that are available to us. Um, as I think the leader was alluding to, the more flexibility the council has in leading its priorities, um the better. But obviously, um we want to take forward as much of that work as we can. And climate change is one of the priorities that the council has set out for its term in office.
Thanks very much. Uh, Robert, Kevin, you got supplementary?
No, I'm I'm happy to have further discussions with the the uh Robert at a later date.
Okay, thanks very much, Kevin. Uh, Fraser, come to you next.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Uh, first of all, could I thank the officers for the very helpful briefing uh given last week. Uh, corporate services are always very good around budgets, uh engaging with elected members. And I I felt it was very useful. And at that um meeting, I uh briefing rather, I raised the question regarding the shortfall in capital receipts twenty three, twenty four, mainly because of the shortfall that we're trying to deal with um in 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 this report. And that is the biggest area, uh the biggest single area of um shortfall. And um I I I was told further information would be circulated and that duly was uh issued around um elected members uh the following day, and I'm grateful for that. Uh, my my question really is about that response because um why I I think maybe I didn't frame my question quite right. Um, um because what I was really looking for was um a little bit of detail of the process used um to come to a conclusion of estimating what capital receipts are likely to be. Um, the the reply given, and I'll just read you the first sentence. Given the invariable factors um that are out with the council's direct control in terms of when these deals finally conclude, the target set for twenty three, twenty four was not based on specific expected sales. To be honest, I wasn't really expecting a list of we expected to sell this bit of land or this building and that that didn't quite happen. What I was really wondering was if officers could give, and I'm I don't necessarily need uh uh full response tonight, but what I'd be very interested in knowing is what is the process that is used to estimate what we expect in terms of asset receipts? And I have a very good reason for asking that because obviously there was a significant um shortfall. Um, and that's not a criticism. I think we all know the climate um that has existed in the in 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 the past financial year and perhaps a little bit more than that. But um I think what I'm looking for is a little bit of detail as to how officers conclude what they're going to estimate in terms of asset receipts. Um, because we we need to have confidence that the revised targets, which I understand are two million for general services and point seven million uh for the housing revenue account um receipts for twenty four, twenty five. I think we need some confidence that these will be met. I know they're lower to take account of um the uh climate in which we now are. But I think it would be useful, and perhaps not for tonight, but maybe a follow-up um email to members to just give some indication as to how the calculation is actually made. Because at the end of the day, what we don't want is a situation where we're having to revise the capital plan yet again because of a shortfall in capital receipts, much as I understand how we got to in a situation that we are tonight, given the volatility in the market.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Fraser. I'll I'll go to Robert and then perhaps uh bring in Robin as well. And as you say, um we need to ensure as much as possible that future forecasts are as accurate as possible. And given the situation where we've now had it confirmed that the UK was in recession and clearly the climate that we're operating in is fairly challenging, as you rightly acknowledge, but nonetheless, we need to have some degree of certainty that the numbers are as accurate as possible. So if I can go to Robert in the first instance?
Thank you, convenor. Thank you, Billy McPherson. So I think the first thing to say is we've tried to look at this, the 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 reality of a downturn in terms of the market, I think you recognise. Um, we've tried to look at it in a in a a balance of judgment and science, I suppose, trying to identify what are the properties that we're in the process of disposing of. Um, what's the likelihood perhaps of them being disposed of? What's the likely receipt going to be? Um, and and when is it likely to happen? And what we have seen, I think, over the last um twelve to eighteen months probably is a slowing down at the pace of which sales have taken place. I'm happy to share a bit more of the detail with um members about how we work that through. There's a real judgement, I think, to be made around making sure we've got a realistic figure for receipts. And I think we're more comfortable with a figure that we've got for next year than we did have um perhaps in hindsight for this year. Um, and also not underplaying it though, so we don't end up with a big receipt and we've taken something out of the programme um too pessimistically. So we'll keep it under um closer review and keep reporting back on that. But I'm happy to share um some more information, convenor.
Thanks very much. Or maybe bring in Robin as well, Fraser, and then I'll come back to you in a second, Robin.
Many thanks, convenor. I think certainly to to re-emphasise a number of the points that you've made and that Robert's made, the climate at the moment is very challenging. And the the approach that we take is a collaborative one between finance and city development to try and build up a picture of what capital receipts are going to be like uh over the the coming two or three years. It it's important to understand that the time scales will always vary because of the nature of the development sector. So even if we were in a boom period, um there would be challenges predicting the the rate at which the sites would be drawn down because, of course, committee agrees the principle of a disposal. Uh, it then goes into the planning system. And as you're well aware, there can be significant variances within the planning system depending on uh depending on feedback from statutory consultees and obviously community input as well. Uh, and then finally, the developer decides at which point they are committing to the scheme and and want to pay for it and to secure the the land. And many of these things are simply out with the council's uh control. Um, the 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 and the final point to say is that we have sold many of the largest strategic assets that we own. And there are still a small number of um in- important ones, but many of these um disposals are now six figures rather than seven figures, for example. And that requires a lot of management to actually control uh and to anticipate the 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 pace that they'll be drawn down because it's it's perhaps easier to control a single one than multiple smaller ones. Uh, so hopefully that helps.
Thanks very much, Robin. Fraser?
I'm very grateful to both Robin and Robert for the responses. I think, um as I as I made clear, I think I do understand this is an inexact science in terms of timing and control. And certainly, the 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 economic climate has clearly had a bearing. Uh, I I'm grateful for both the the responses from Robert and and Robin. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fraser. I'll come to councillor Malone next, Charlie. Good to see you.
Okay. Well, sorry to stop you then, Ben. Appreciate that. Okay, thanks, well then. Bye bye. If you just leave my comment, this section's ended because there really is a comment around the question about the report. But it's just I wanted to make my gratitude to um some of the responses I've had to be around and give an update. If that was okay with you, yeah, um I'd like to do that.
Yeah, of course, Charlie, if you can be two six them. So um there's no other questions on this report, so can I take this as agreed? Yeah, um Charlie, I'll I'll let you come in.
I'd just like to obviously say that I've been here for some time, been here with hospitals since December. Um, starting with the fracture soul. Uh, there is a bill in Gran Canaria where we're charging a thousand euros a night. And if anybody wants to see the difference between the private and public sector, probably for your money, you get it here. And obviously, there's members of all parties have written to me expressing um their concerns and best wishes. And I'd like to thank everybody for putting up with my absence. Um, I will, if necessary, appear in a wheelchair next week for the budget meeting. Uh, but if you want, I'll 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 attend online. But I just wanted to share my gratitude. And John, can I say a personal thank you to yourself? And all the emails, I think.
Thank you. Thanks, Charlie. And uh as I've said before, we're all thinking of you and looking forward to you coming back uh and hopefully being fit as a fiddle and your usual cheeky, robust self uh back in these committee meetings and in other forums as well. So look after yourself and we'll catch up very soon. Okay? Take care. Okay, um we will move on to the next item with that. So Willie? Yeah, report here for noting any questions or comments on this. Pretty standard report. Nope. Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Back to you, Willie. Uh, of course, some of us, particularly group leaders, had the opportunity to sit down with members of the Accounts Commission in regard to the report and the assessment of Dundee City Council. It's fair to say it was a very positive meeting. Uh, and their praise was very welcome, uh despite all of the challenges that we know are are alive and well uh in our city. And I think it's worth recognising a few points that came out of that process. Both the recognition that uh we didn't beat around the bush in the sense that we know what the issues are. We were very honest about the scale of those challenges, the issues, and also what we wanted to do uh to mitigate and improve them. Uh, they also commended the effective leadership by officers and elected members. And of course, they uh watched a few of our proceedings uh and again, were very uh very complimentary in terms of the level of scrutiny and the level of engagement and also cross-party working. And I think that's something that we should all be proud of and take something uh from. They also recognised the commitment to engagement at a community level, the financial management of the council, particularly in very difficult circumstances and and difficult financial times. And so with all of that, I think it's a very, very good report and something that we should all be proud of because we all have a role in this council, whether that is in administration, opposition, or or indeed officers on the operational day-to-day delivery of the council and its services. And this report was very good in that regard. But one thing, and I'll repeat myself on what I said uh on item four, which is we can never become complacent. We know that the challenges continue uh to grow. We know that the cumulative effect of thirteen years of austerity at UK level will continue to have an impact across our communities. Uh, and what we do is a stick and plaster for some of those issues, but it's an important one. Uh, and we need to be laser focused on continuing uh that improvement. So with all of that said, I will come to questions and comments. Um, uh councillor Shaw?
Just very quickly, um Andrea Calder um shared with us the advertisement that was going to go into the newspaper um prior to um this coming to committee. And often, not everybody nowadays um has access to the newspaper, so I shared it. I had one engagement. Um, normally I put up something and you get people raging and one engagement. And I guess that's what happens when you've got something that's really genuinely positive. I think one of the most important things that shone through, and it was the relationship between the officers and the elected members. And that's obviously elected members across the board. And I I think uh what we've just heard recently, um the fact that we do care across and the parties is also really important. So uh keep up the good work, keep everybody and keep talking, because I guess at the end of the day, it's communication that's the important thing. So thank you and and well done to everyone. And hopefully it will continue.
Thanks very much, Lyn. Appreciate that. Uh, Fraser?
Uh, thanks, convenor. I I would concur with everything that has been said. Obviously, yourself, councillor Cook, and myself attended the meeting with the um members of the Accounts Commission. And what struck me about it uh was um frankly, they they asked some very pertinent questions and were very engaged in the whole process. But I was also very impressed specifically by the way in which chief officers in particular um dealt in depth with these responses, showing a um real commitment to um the work of the city council and moving the city um forward. I was actually, Andrea Calder was mentioned a moment ago, and I felt there was one thing that often is overlooked when when we do these thanks to our chief officers and all elected members who took part in in this process, because we have a very positive result at the end of it. And I feel that at the end of the day, the the engagement with the Accounts Commissioner has to take place, but also you have to evidence your data. You have to prove your point. And I think the head of Chief Executive Services and colleagues uh put a lot of effort into ensuring that, that we could evidence uh where we were making a point. And so I'm very grateful for that as well, but extremely grateful, as I say. And it's not just chief officers. It's also the seven thousand and more staff who provide the services day-to-day um of Dundee City Council and their partner organisations like Health and Social Care Partnership, Leisure and Culture, Dundee T S I Contracts and so on, who provide services for the people of Dundee. They do sterling work. And I think we should all be very appreciative of that because it's that sort of work that leads to positive reports from the Accounts Commissioner, as we've seen in this particular case. Uh, thank you, convenor.
Thanks very much. Uh, for those comments, and you'll not be surprised, I wholeheartedly agree. Uh, I think Andrea, the broader team, and as you say, every single um member of the Dundee City Council family um has an important role to play. And I think what we've seen over consecutive reports, not just tonight, but in other reports, is that there is a huge amount of work being undertaken to affect positive change in the city. And sometimes, or more often than not these days, it's with one hand tied behind your back. Uh, and I think we've got to commend all of the people that are involved in that. And this report reflects their hard work. Uh, and again, that's why it's worth celebrating and highlighting. So thanks for both your comments, Lyn and Fraser. Um, I think that's all of the comments on this item. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Move on to the next item, Willie. Yep, thanks very much. I think uh again, it's really important that we have the ability to scrutinise uh this report and just to set out some of the context in which leisure and culture are operating. Of course, they deliver a huge array of really vitally important uh services to communities. Of course, they deliver a huge array of really vitally important services to communities and individuals. And indeed, today, my own boys were visiting one of our libraries. And again, it's really important that these services are recognised in the same way that we've done elsewhere this evening on the agenda, in terms of celebrating what they deliver and the important role that they have. Of course, it's also about making sure that we are live to and aware of the challenges in those services as well, both financial and practical. We've seen some of the challenges as a result of COVID in terms of usage, and some of that is pulled out within this report as well. And of course, recognising some of the huge achievements within leisure and culture and all of the various elements to the organisation and what they provide in partnership with many others as well. So with all of that said, I will come to questions, comments and motion. Councillor Duncan first, Craig?
Thanks, Kavina. Yeah, just I'd like to firstly thank the head of Democratic and Legal Services for getting the collected attendance figures that appendix one emailed to all of us. There was obviously a considerable discrepancy between the original figures and the ones that we've now got to see. My question actually goes to these collected figures and those at 5.2 in the reports. It seems to me that in the majority of areas, for example, libraries, similarly museums, halls, active schools, et cetera, I think the footfall figures for 2022 to 23 were still lagging behind the pre-pandemic ones of 2019 to 20, albeit on a positive trajectory, which is good. Obviously, we're now near the end of the 2023 to 24 financial year. And I therefore would like to ask if that positive trajectory in attendance figures is still continued? And is footfall now, or at least not exceeding, the 2019 to 20 figures in many areas of the leisure and culture?
Thanks for the question, Craig. And I think it's probably worth noting before I come to Judy in the first instance, that I know from speaking to those that are on boards of other cultural organisations, for example, that similar challenges are there and it's not local to Dundee either. It's across the board. And we haven't seen everything return to normal, whatever that is, in inverted commas. So Judy, I'll come to you to offer a response.
Thanks, Kavina. Thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. The figures that we have for the most recent quarters of this year are showing that we're still on that upward trajectory. But I do have to say, it's slower than we would like, but we are still showing positive trends. And I can certainly share the details of that with elected members, if that's appropriate.
Thanks very much, Judy. Yes, I'm sure that'll be helpful, Craig.
Yeah, I think both John and Judy, I think that would be helpful. And you know, I certainly take your point, John, that you know, obviously, across a range of sectors and what used to be normal, we're still not quite back to normal. But it's still worth asking the questions, I think.
Oh, absolutely agree with you, Craig. And I think actually, the more that we can all collectively do to encourage people to visit these venues, because again, I'm not just saying this because Judy's on the call, but last weekend I took my boys to MacManus. And every time I go, I see a new item and it really keeps my interest. The boys want to stay in the section with all the stuffed animals, I should say. But I think beyond that, we all need to practise what we preach in encouraging people to visit the fantastic offer that we have in the city. And of course, much of it free to enter. And again, hopefully, we see not only us return to normal, but beyond that. Because you know, Dundee is a very small, well-connected city. And I think the more that people can benefit from leisure, culture, sport is to their benefit in the wider city as well. So your point's well made, Craig, and I appreciate your question. I'll come back to you, Kevin, since you've got motion, if that's all right, and I'll go straight to Bailey Scott. Derek?
Well, thanks, Kavina. I think it's quite useful to have this report in front of us the week before the council sets its budget, because it gives an indication of just how much some of the visitor attractions, that is one of the options and included in the options that the administration were considering closing. And for instance, in Brody Castle Museum, it would be madness to close that, given the multi-million pounds that have been spent on the waterfront and the active travel for the sake of £80,000, which is the cost of Brody Castle Museum. So I'm going to assume, Kavina, that it's going to stay open and that won't be something that will be closed. And so my question is in relation to going forward with Brody Castle. It really is the anchor for visitor attractions in Brody Ferry. And I think it's underutilised at the moment. And far more visitors can come to it as a result of all the work that's been done in Brody Ferry to make Brody Ferry a prime visitor destination. So my question is, will leisure and culture Dundee be able to work with Historic Environment Scotland to make better use of the castle and to absolutely maximise its potential as a visitor attraction?
Thanks for the question, Derek. I'll just go to Judy. I'm sure there's ongoing engagement quite regularly with Historic Environment Scotland. But Judy, do you want to offer a response?
Yes, thanks for the question, Bailey Scott. Certainly dependent on the outcome of the budget discussions. If it's decided that leisure and culture continue to operate a museum from the castle, we'll certainly continue the work that we already do with Historic Environment Scotland and Dundee City Council as a sort of tri-way partnership to see what other developments we could put in place.
Okay, thanks very much, Judy. Derek?
No, thank you. Thanks. Thanks very much. Okay, Kevin, I'll come back to you and your motion.
For the motion to be circulated. I'll just start speaking as that's done, just to make sure we get through the business fairly quickly. Obviously, the Labour Group has always recognised that leisure and culture needed a bit of support through COVID. And over the last few years, they've put additional funds into their budget in the attempt to try to get individuals through the door, stir a bit of money around the pot and in the hope that leisure and culture gets back to full health much quicker than it has. And in putting this motion forward, I attempt to do very similar. And it's really calling upon the chief executive to, or given the fact that we're seeing still decline in the numbers of people using our leisure and sports facilities, that it's calling upon the chief executive to enter into conversation with the NHS and with a view to some of their charitable funds being released into social prescribing, so that our facilities were moved or used much greater than they are at the moment. And I do that in taking into account this report and its reflection that it shows some used to be down. And in taking into account the director of public health report that suggests people in Dundee live 14.1 years less in areas of multiple deprivation. And they live in greater ill health for very much longer. So there's obviously a duty on the health service or us in partnership to work better in the attempt to improve health outcomes for the citizens of Dundee. And I'm hoping that in trying to do that, that we could get our sports facilities used greater through social prescribing. And I'm sure it wouldn't be on leisure and culture to be able to work with health to produce the type of programme that would make a real difference to people. So I'm hoping that, as I did the last time, that there'll be a cross-party support of this. And with its best intentions, it'll make a difference to the quality of life of people in Dundee.
Thanks, Kevin. Before I offer a comment, I just want to clarify something. And perhaps Roger, as head of legal and democratic services, can come on the call for a moment. So not only am I a board member of NHS T side, but I sit as a member of the Charitable Foundation, on which you are predicated, I suppose, the motion as well. So I'm very conscious that I don't necessarily want to agree something in this forum that then compromises my position elsewhere. So Roger, can I perhaps just ask for a view if I need to dip out and hand the chair to Willie for this item?
In relation to the first item you mentioned, councillor Alexander, I wouldn't suggest that would be necessary. But in relation to the second, I think that would be advisable.
Okay, that's fine. On that basis, Billy can give me a moment. We're going to kind of shuffle screens because I'll hand over to Bailey Sawyers and not take part on the item on that basis. So Willie, sorry, I'm landing you in it here, but if you can take over the chairing of the meeting for this item?
No, not a problem. I wonder if we could, if Lee Wardle could maybe take the Kevin's motion off the screen, please? It's a bit easier for me to see folk. So. Um. Two six. Jack, I saw you come in saying you'd be willing to second Bailey Keenan, but I'm happy for you to speak. But I don't think in terms of, well, certainly on behalf of the administration, we're quite happy to accept what's been said, but happy for you to come in?
No, that's okay. I was only going to speak as a health professional anyway, on the benefits of social prescribing. But also the fact that we have this huge resource in leisure and cultures and they're best placed to help us deliver care to promote healthy outcomes for individuals and reducing health inequalities. So it was really just reiterating that.
Okay, thanks for that. I don't see any other indications. Kevin, anything else you want to say?
No, I'm just quite happy. I hope that it's taken serious by the charitable organisation and I hope that the rest of the Dundee partnership could get behind it. When the director of public health spoke to her report, I tried to put her under a bit of pressure to deliver this. This appears to be an opportunity for a working partnership to achieve it. I think it would make a big difference. And as a councillor that's been around a while, the length of time that people live in Dundee is something that's been concerning me for years. And I would like to make a difference for that, if I could.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Short, we're in a kind of formal situation, but since I don't get to chair my meetings very often, I'll indulge you as long as it's a short question.
And you never usually indulge me. It's very short. I just want to check, I don't know if maybe anybody in the call can clarify this or not. Is this the NHS T side innovation funding that we're discussing at the moment?
To my knowledge, it's a charity fund that they've got. It's a foundation charity. And if you recall, it wasn't long ago that the health service used it to buy a computer system that people created about. So you know, I'm hoping that there's sufficient funds in there to help us out.
I think I saw the chief executive put his hand up, so maybe he can clarify that point?
Thanks, Kavina. It's the Charitable Foundation, which I think recently has been relaunched and was previously the Benevolent Foundation. So there's been quite a lot of communication recently around the different approaches which they're seeking to fund. So hopefully that clarifies the question, councillor Short.
It does. It's done. It's one that I often recommend that people go to when they're looking for repeats and pieces. So that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else in that item, I will hand back to the convenor, who hopefully is still here. I was going to sneak away for his tea.
Be pleased to hear I did not, councillor Sawyers. And that'll be the last time you chair as a result of your indulgence. But thank you very much for doing that. And thanks very much, Kevin, for bringing it forward as well. We'll move on to the next item then. Willie? This report obviously provides an update on antisocial behaviour stats across the city. So happy to take any particular questions on this item. I think councillor Coleman, Daniel?
I apologise, Mr. Kavina. It's more of a comment than a question, but to thank you for calling in. I just want to comment on the related positive actions that have taken place in our worship and ward around the lead up to Halloween and Bonfire Night, as reported at 4.9 in the report. Thanks go to all involved, Dundee FC, Community Trust, Dundee West Football Club, Downfield Football Club, County Community Centre and Police, youth volunteers and all others who helped deliver these activities, which show the really positive community activity in the area. And although there were still sadly some scenes of antisocial behaviour issues around that time of year, the significant reduction was quite evident, and that's very much a positive sign. And I hope the positive side of community activity and events can be continued this year and future years.
Thanks very much for your comments, Daniel. And again, completely echo what you've said there. I think there was a huge amount of effort in the run-up and of course, ongoing. And our youth work team in particular, I know, do a sterling job across not only our ward, but across the rest of the city as well. And I think we should commend that work because of course, it's really important. It's about ongoing engagement. It's not just about one particular day or one particular event, but the ongoing work to support young people who in some instances are disaffected, disengaged, or perhaps dealing with other issues and trauma and challenges. And again, there's a hell of a lot of work that goes on across the board to support people in those types of situations as well. And again, it's worth highlighting. So thanks very much for your comment. If there's no other comments or questions on this, I'll take that as agreed, noted. Thank you very much. Willie? Hopefully, the detail of the report before you is self-explanatory, but happy to take any questions or comments on this. Nope. Okay, can we take this as agreed then? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie? Again, hopefully self-explanatory in terms of the approval of the purchase of cloud computing and the migration of applications, desktop ITs and, sorry, and IT services over to the cloud and the resilience that goes along with that to make sure that all of our systems work as effectively as we hope they do, notwithstanding some very minor issues that occasionally happen. So can I take this item as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Willie? Can we deal with this in the usual way? You see no dang heads and nobody reaching for the keyboard. So thank you, that item is agreed. And that is all the items for consideration tonight. So thank you all for your participation. And I hope that the fantastic unanimous way in which we worked continues into the budget next week as well. But we'll see you all very soon. Take care. Have a good week. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a nice evening. Night night.
Thanks.
Good night, all.
Good night, all.